Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Dan Dol.
Let us pray. As we just completed our season of Easter, it may be a good idea for us to continue to goodness their intentions throughout the year to work together for betterment of our community. In Jesus' our name, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge is ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and through the Republic of which stands, one nation under God indivisible, would never be unjust as for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo.
President.
Councilmember Brooke Markot.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember Dee Dee Johnson Reed. Councilmember Dan Dol.
Here. Thank you.
This time is public comment. If anyone has a comment card, you can only comment on an agenda item. And I also try to remind everybody to put their phones on silent at this time. No comment cards?
Mm-mm.
All right, we're trucking. Item 2A.
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of March 19th, 2024, which will be published on April 3rd, 2024.
I need a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo. Is there any discussion on our regular meeting of March 19th? Hearing seen none, please vote your machines. Item 3A.
Troy Como to announce his candidacy for New Iberia City Councilman representing District 3.
Good afternoon.
Dean.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Troy Como. I live at 1609 Southwood Drive in the side of the city limits in District 3. And I'm here tonight to formally announce that my intention is to run for District 3 seat. After much prayer and much consideration, my wife and I have decided that it's time to give back again. I've been involved in our community for a long, long time through different, many, many different stages and phases and venues, from serving at our family church as a young, I don't know, 10 or 12 years old, and then on to sports, youth sports, adult sports through the City Recreation Department. And as of late, served eight years with Iberia Parish Council in District 5. So we've been blessed in many, many ways. I often say my father, Mr. Cesar Como, blessed me with the curse to want to be involved. So after a few years off, we've decided, after many blessings that we've just experienced, we've decided that it's time for us to give back again. And we plan to run for city council. I say we. I'm married to Vanessa Bro Como, my best friend in high school sweetheart for almost 40 years now. So there is no Troy Como without Vanessa Como. So I would be remiss to not mention her, that we do it as everything as a team. So but anyhow, I'm here to just formally announce that tonight. And I'll be seeing you here and there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Well, good. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Thanks for stepping up.
Thank you.
Item 4A.
Ordinance number 2024-07, an ordinance declaring certain New Iberia Police Department vehicles as surplus and further authorizing the sale of same to civilians and other law enforcement agencies at a cost not less than $12,000 and $20,000 in accordance with state law.
We have, as usual, a complication because that's part of our job. These cars that we're selling, a tree fell on them last week, okay? So one's damaged more than the other. So I need to add in this lessed tree damage from last week because we have prices of 12 and 20. And so what we're going to do is get estimates. And if they want us to fix it, we'll sell it for that. If we sell it for less, it would be minus the tree damage. But since we published it with 12,000 and 20,000, I need to make this change. So I'm bringing it out there. Before we do the public hearing, I would need a motion to amend.
Make a motion to amend the resolution to affect the damage on the police car. Is it one or two?
I'll second it.
It's four, sir.
A four.
It's a patrol unit at 20, and it has the most damage. And it's the fusions, three of our little fusions that the detectives drove, and they have minor damage.
All right, so.
Still great cars, if anybody's interested.
Amended to cover all four.
So I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo and a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. Please vote on that amendment. Thank you very much. Now I'm looking for a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Markot, I need a second.
Second.
Councilwoman Marlon Lewis, thank you. Anybody here to comment on this item? Hearing seen no one, I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo and Councilwoman Brooke Markot, thank you very much. Now I need a motion on the main motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there any discussion on this item?
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
Where did the damage happen with the trees?
In the city parking lot where we put them all the time. A tree right on the property line between us and the name, a water oak. What else would you think? They always fall. So weather wasn't that bad, and it just, it was, you know, we didn't know it was rotten. And so it fell and clipped them. Anybody else? Then please vote your machines. All right, I'll sell some dented car, I mean, great car. Item 4B.
Ordinance number 2024-08, an ordinance amending and reenacting Section 14-3 of the City of New Iberia Code of Ordinances relative to the composition of the Dangerous Animal Committee.
Okay, I have this again. We're going to need to amend it because what we came up with, remember the last time we said we would do it? We would work on it some more. I considered everybody's comments. We think a very simple solution is to add that we can have a substitute. The substitute would be able to be called up, even have somebody who volunteered who really knows dogs to be the substitute. That's a whole nother subject. But this would allow us to have a substitute person. And that way, we have a shot at convening this dog committee whenever we need to. And that's been the problem, that it's hard to get everybody together while we are in possession of somebody's dog. So I would need a motion to amend that we add to our verbiage that we would have a substitute person.
I make a motion to amend the verbiage to include a substitute.
I second.
Okay, I got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo and a second by Councilman Dan Dol. Any discussion on that?
So do you have all the people to make the committee now?
I have all the people to make the committee. I will be talking to and probably replacing one person who has not been able to attend.
Okay.
But I wanted to do this first, that's the proper order to do things, and then give her a break and talk to her because she did volunteer to do this. So if she can't do it, I'll replace her.
Okay.
But this substitute person can pop in, and that will give us, once I have replaced the person who hasn't showed up and have my substitute, I think we'll always be able to convene a meeting when we need to. Remember, the problem with this committee is that it's only when a dog bites someone or kills another animal.
And it's a city dog, I'm assuming.
Yes, only the city. So it's very unpredictable. I can't tell you what's going to happen. All of our other boards, they have a schedule and a calendar. There's no calendar for a dog bite.
Gotcha, that's interesting.
You're going to appoint the substitute?
Yes, I will appoint the substitute.
Okay. So we ain't got to come to the council?
No, sir.
All right. So you have people volunteering for this already, or?
I have one person.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
Which gave me the idea to do the substitute, but you do what you got to do.
Gotcha.
Any other discussion on this? Yes, sir. Somebody had something?
Mayor, I got a question. I thought the substitute was supposed to be designated by the regular board member. Is, did we discuss?
Yeah, but we didn't have a substitute.
We didn't have a substitute?
No.
So he or she can substitute for any board member that misses a meeting?
Yes, that way, that way, we're going to be able to convene. Because I mean, what do you do with a three-person committee and somebody ain't there?
Got you, yeah, correct.
So any other discussion, then please vote on this amendment to our ordinance. Thank you very much. Now I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Councilwoman Brooke Markot.
Second.
Councilman Marlon Lewis, is anybody here to comment on this item? Seeing none, I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Councilman David Broussard and Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo, thank you all. Now I need a motion on the main motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Brooke Markot and Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing seen none, please vote your machines. Thank you, thank you. 4C.
Ordinance number 2024-09, an ordinance amending approved budget allocations for American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the City of New Iberia.
And our amendments to it are we are adding, well, I mean, I got to play the game. We're adding residential for the demo portion. We have a discussion item later in the meeting. And what we're going to end up doing, which is really cool, that half a million dollar grant we got from the state to do demos, we're going to take the 450 we had and be able to continue the program. So not only are we doing half a million, we'll be doing 450, almost the same program. But I want to add residential to it because the way we had it worded in the ARPA that was adopted, it was commercial and industrial. But seeing that program work so well, and for the people that don't know, we got a half a million dollar grant to do demos to clean our city up. What we did was take a different approach and say, hey, you got something you want to clean up? We'll do it for free. We didn't make an adversarial relationship where we went after people, took them to court, you know, did all kind of things, held it against their taxes, did the things we normally have to do to demo. So this was really positive and non-confrontational, and we have a waiting list. So by taking this ARPA dollars and never, never invent what you can steal, stealing this program from the state that actually works, we'll be able to double the program. So it was just a fun way to do that, but I need to add the word residential to be able to do that. And then we have one other. It's already in there? Okay.
It's for the business development.
Yeah, we have a business development grant, and we are focusing on disadvantaged and small businesses and minority businesses. But we had only put it in one area of town. Well, I guess we weren't thinking. Well, that should be opened up to people all over town. So we're changing the wording. We had originally that it was in the West End. Well, not everybody who could apply for this lives in the West End. So we are changing the wording so that we can go for these business development grants for small businesses, startups, and minority-based businesses all over town. So those are our two changes. So you need to know what we're doing. So with that, I need a motion to make the changes.
Motion.
Second.
No, well, it's, what's that, Jeff?
Public hearing.
Yeah, no, well, since I, well, I explained it. Do we have to change anything, or they're both in there?
Only one's in there.
Yeah, only one. The residential wording, I need a motion to amend.
Add residential to it.
Yeah, just to add residential. I had a motion by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter.
No, Marlon.
Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. And remember, this is just to add one word, residential. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Yes, sir.
You had, you said you had a list of people already applied to get on, right?
We have the list from the half a million dollar grant with the state, and we kept taking names. Oh, and the other thing, y'all on the hook again, help me get more names. So we will have. Yeah, we'll have to turn in more lists. But what we did do was, I hadn't even thought of this yet, but we kept the list because we thought we could apply for the grant again. The problem with that is we can't apply for the grant till we finish this one. I mean, it might be two years. So this is a way to do it, but yes, sir, we're working off the list.
But you can't apply for the grant unless you have the list.
Yeah, well, that's part of it. And in this case, I need a new list to spend $450,000.
Got you. It was a minimum, it wasn't a minimum dollars? What, we had to spend so much the first round or something?
Yeah, we had to guarantee, right.
Right, right. The same thing for the second?
No, this is our money from ARPA.
Okay.
So we do need to get it committed this year, but we have all year to do it.
So are we having to finish going through this list using the grant before we actually go to the people who are not so willing to let us?
No, because we don't have enough on the overflow list. So I think it's fair to start with the overflow list and utilize that. But that's not going to be $450,000. So we will continue to add. Now, I'm pretty sure, because this is a positive thing, we're going to end up with an overflow that we can't do. But that's a good problem to have. Then what we'll do, we'll finish the state grant. This one is not tied to the state. When the state one's finished, we'll reapply with that same list.
So what I'm asking about is those who are not the friendly ones, who are not willing to let us go and clear their land.
We're not going to do away with our demo program and our compliance department.
Okay.
That will still happen.
That's what I was asking, if we have to finish this before we got to that?
No, 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 it has nothing to do with that.
Okay.
One has nothing to do with the other. We will get this going. What it does have to do is I have one city attorney, and I have one, you remember the time I tried to tear 20 houses down at once, and I bogged the whole system down? We are going to wait on some things until we get this going because he's about to have.
And you do have the inspector and, you know, the same people doing these things in several different programs.
Yeah, but are we giving up on the regular demos? No, we're not, because if it affects a neighbor and people aren't taking care of their property, we got to move on to it.
Right, that's what I was concerned about.
But we have to take the easy ones.
Yeah, we got to do the easy ones first, though.
Okay, I still have a problem child. That is not easy, so.
I saw one.
I don't know. Still on the demo list, just kind of impatiently waiting. The poor neighbors, you know, are having to deal with this property.
All right.
That's why I was asking.
I'm sure we'll be able to sneak some of them in.
I hope so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mayor, I'd just like to remind the public that on this demolition project, that you have to have a clear and free title, am I correct? In order for us to proceed with demoing.
Yeah, yes, yes. And that will be the same with this, is that we, you know, we will, some of the people on the list are because they didn't clear that house.
Because we ran into problems where we had four family members on the home, three of them wanted to tear it down and one didn't, and
Correct.
we couldn't get it done. So that gives the public time to work on that if that's something that they want to do.
That's right. We have several people working on that right now for that first list.
Yeah, yeah, trying to make the cut.
Yeah, we signed them up, but they're doing the curative work, yeah. I'm not, I'm not doing it, but I know it's being done.
And then in some cases, the third or fourth family member that don't know, they just don't understand that they're not going to end up with a bill. Some people just think, well, what is it going to cost me to do this?
Right, and that's for us to keep, at least on these, to keep the word out there that there's no bill coming.
Right.
Anybody else? Then please vote your machine, and that would cover our amendment. Okay, now I need a motion to open our public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo and Councilwoman Brooke Markot. Anyone from the public to comment on this item? Seeing none, motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Markot and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Now I need a motion on the main motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman David Broussard and Councilwoman Brooke Markot. Any discussion? Am I good? Please vote your machines. Thank you. All right. 5A.
Resolution number 24-33, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a fee agreement related to lead cable litigation.
All right, I have Beau Dewey coming up. Let's get the motion out the way, and then we'll, so can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo, second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. And Beau Dewey is here to talk to us. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Councilmembers, of course, for the record, my name is Beau Dewey. People know me as District Attorney, but I'm here tonight without that hat on. I'm here with my lawyer hat on. And I'm here to talk about, I'm sure many of you are familiar with the Wall Street and U.S. News article that came out about a year or so ago, maybe about a year ago, talking about these lead-based cables that were wrapped with telephone lines, beginning back with Bell South and these other agencies that ultimately have been purchased, many of them purchased by the other major utility companies at this time, and that there was a problem with the testing that was done by those organizations showing excessive lead content in their locations and in some of the ground and water surfaces that they tested throughout different areas of this country. And they centered their article on the City of New Iberia, basically referring to it as a ground zero of this problem. And the problem being is that these old cables that have been abandoned are wrapped in a lead-based sheathing, which over time degrades and breaks down into the soil, and then the soil gets into the water. And that's the allegations that they have made. I've been contacted in my personal capacity with some gentlemen with a firm that is, has offices in New Orleans, but has offices all over the country. And they get involved in a lot of this multi-district litigation that involves different areas, different states. And they are wanting to have clients in this area that may be affected so that they can get in and see if there is a problem. And if there is a problem, what steps we can take to correct the problem. And we've been working on that for some time. And I've had conversations with several private clients, as well as public clients, governments that are along this stretch of Bayou Teche that have, several of them have agreed to sign on to an agreement with the law firm. The law firm's name is Burns Surest. It's a, it's a big law firm. They get, their specialty is multi-district litigation and their ability to get on the steering committees and help control that litigation. And so they're, they're interested in the City of New Iberia, obviously, as one of their clients because of, frankly, the publicity it got to start off with. And it certainly appears from their data that this is where a lot of the impact is occurring. Now, the litigation could stem beyond the parish of Iberia, which it probably would, and into the other parishes and potentially other states where all of these old lines have been abandoned. We have one in particular that took some photographs, which is right by the Piri Street Bridge.
Sticking out the ground.
Yeah, they actually covered it.
Yeah, it used to be sticking out the ground.
Yeah, so.
You found it?
I'm here on, working with them on behalf of some other municipalities. We have people like, entities like, you know, City of Franklin and Patterson who have signed on to this because they have similar issues that were alleged in that article. And of course, the team that I'm involved in is not going to rely on their data or their testing. They're going to do their own due diligence before going out and making any demands or any action on that. And so that's the process they're in right now, is getting all of their data together, getting their experts together. They've had some preliminary looks. I've been out on site at the bridge and at other areas in other parishes, looking at what they're seeing, and they feel that it merits investigation. The ultimate goal here, obviously, is to, if there is a problem, to fix the problem. And in fixing the problem, you know, what that entails has yet to be seen because we don't know how extensive this cables system go and how difficult it is to deal with those problems. So that would be the goal. The contract itself is a contingent fee contract, meaning that the attorneys and firms put up the cost of investigation of it, put up the cost of prosecuting it, put up the cost of testing, of experts, the whole nine yards. And the clients, which would be the City of New Iberia, as well as the other clients that we represent, aren't responsible for any of that cost out of pocket. Of course, there at some point is some settlement, which the ultimate goal of the settlement is a cleanup and at the very least, some indemnities for the clients that if anyone makes a claim relating to those cables, that they're indemnified by these companies. And that's something that is consistently done throughout. But it's a contingent fee contract of 33% that if it's successful in actual litigation and there's a settlement, that the 33% figure is figured on the total amount. And then after that, any cost or remove from that and any cash that may be paid or money that's paid as part of the settlement, that amount would go to the individual client, being the cities or the other entities or individuals we represent. It's a basic contingent fee contract. They put the money up front, they put the money in the cost. If for some reason, there's no recovery, we eat everything. We eat all the cost. So, but, so I'm open to any questions about it. We've been working on this about six months. Like I said, we do have some private landowners on the bayou who have signed on, as well as municipalities. And they would really be honored if they could represent the city, which was the main person in these articles.
And the good thing is, we have strength in numbers because everybody else has signed with them. I think we were probably the last ones. But it makes a team, and it's kind of neat that there's more horsepower because they represent everybody. So we don't have, you know, there's no conflict in it, and we're all in it as a team. So that's what really appealed to me, you know?
And when you get to these kind of multi-district litigations, the real goal is to get a seat at what they call the steering table, which is a smaller group of litigants and lawyers that really kind of, along with the judge who's in control of it, kind of control how that looks, how this looks. And they've been very successful. Their forte is always being one of those firms that sits at that table, which puts the city in the best position possible to have input versus other cities that may not be at the table and may be represented by other entities.
So questions? Yes, sir.
So what companies are we looking at?
Well, right now, the obvious.
Defenders, being defenders.
Well, the obvious companies are like AT&amp;T and Verizon, who have purchased the infrastructure for a lot of these older telephone companies. And as a result, we believe the evidence will show that they have assumed those liabilities because they became their property, and they're still sitting in leaching things.
Yes. So these cables you're talking about, all of them are under the ground, under the water?
They can be multiple places. They're both under, you know, most of us, like, you know, like you, Dan, I grew up on a Bayou Teche on Nine and a Half Avenue and a Joe boat, pulling each other up and down on skis and boards that we made at home. And every time you see those cable crossing signs by the bridges, they're generally around the bridges. That's where a multitude of cables go across for utilities or whatever. And those are where they're generally located at those crossings like that.
But it's not like cables that's hanging through telephone poles throughout the city.
No, not that I'm aware of at this time. It's all underground. And so underground, as they age and the casing is deteriorating and decaying, it's leaching the lead into, into the land and subsequently into the water where they've recorded, and I say they, the news organizations had their own team. So I'm relying on what they said. That's not what we would do. We go back with our own experts to confirm if what they have is accurate. But, you know, they're talking about multiple times higher lead concentration than should be around human consumption, children's playgrounds, things of that nature. They're just trying to deal, have them be accountable for that, you know, the cleanup and controlling as best that can be done. Those kind of risk to our public.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you for bringing this to light.
Yes, sir.
A lot of us were in the dark. And lead's been out there a long time.
Yeah, these cables are.
Getting rid of lead.
They're back like, I think about the 50s, something like that.
Gas and paint, lead. So we thank you for being on top, and I hope you keep the right group on top. Thank you for your fight on this.
Yes, sir.
Is there any potential or past damage to the public that even the news people are aware of?
You know, there are people that may have some private actions. I guess theoretically, you could go to an individual, but you'd have to have a causal connection. That may be hard to display. And that's some of the challenges here is we got to show that the lead that's in the ground or the lead that's in the water more likely than not had come from these leaching cables. There are ways they could do it based upon the composite of the material that they use. They can do some chemical or testing. And, you know, Freddie, you probably know more about this than I do. But you could kind of sometimes, you know, reach conclusions based on, you know, testing of the ground and testing of the materials, that a lot of the components, and try to make that connection. Which in the article, they claim that they did. But, you know, we're not going to rely on someone else's testing.
Yes, ma'am.
So we ask it for damages and cleanup?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
However, however best that works, we're not sure how that's going to look, and that's part of the process. But as you can understand, you're not going to get any real reaction until you get involved in that. For instance, the article resulted in having unexposed wire now covered with, conveniently with a cover.
Yeah.
That you can't get off. Try. So we just want to make sure that, you know, that we protect our public and if there's someone that is accountable for the cost of doing so, that they bear that cost.
Other questions, comments?
If you have a copy of that article, feel free to share it.
Yeah, I've got, I've got.
Not, you can email it or whatever.
I can email it to you. There was one in U.S. News, and really the original one was a Wall Street.
And you can find one online.
Yeah, if you just Google lead cable.
Oh, yeah, it comes up.
Just where that thing crosses.
Yep.
Under the bayou.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, they, actually, it's an interesting site, right back over here. It's a whole network of caves, take caves, underwater or underground things that I didn't realize were there.
Yeah, are they still being used?
Uh, there's, yeah, it's, no, maybe. I mean, there's some probably may be used, certainly, yeah. I mean, that's some utilities. I don't think any, you know, with the advent of the wireless and the cell towers, I don't think any of the telephone wires are being used anymore. Everything's on the towers. But the problem is that they just cut and left, and it's like, okay, well. And I'm sure at the time, they didn't realize that this was going to happen, but they did.
I think they cleaned the easy part.
Yeah.
And they left the part that would be difficult to remove, and it was sticking up out of the ground.
Yep.
And people are fishing right there.
Yep. Yep. Any else, questions, comments?
Yeah, I Google lead wires in New Iberia, and the first thing came up, so it's trending.
Oh, it's famous.
Yeah.
It's famous.
Chamber of Commerce moment.
So no one has tried to dig them up yet, I'm assuming?
No, ma'am.
No, I wanted to, but they told me not to.
They can't.
I got a backhoe, I mean, I was thinking, I was going to rip them out.
Yeah, it appears that they came out right after the article, and they had.
Yeah, about a week later, they.
They came down and apparently the, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
It was the companies that sent a team down here.
For about two weeks after the article, I saw some people in white suits, and they set a table up. I saw another group coming, they were testing, and for about two weeks, there was a lot of activity. And then, because I'd ride by, I mean, I'd go home that way and I'd see the cable. And then right around that time, maybe the second week or whatever, third week, all of a sudden, the cable was covered.
I just almost wonder if they do try to mess with it and disturb it, if it's going to make it disperse even more than what it's doing right now.
Well, I'm certain that they're going to take all of those aspects approach. I mean, that's way above my pay grade about how that looks in engineering-wise and environmentally-wise. But, you know, they had similar type of things, you know, with other problems with all, you know, they cleaned up the Gulf with BP.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, true.
But there's a will, there's a way.
Gotcha.
We just want to make sure that our constituents in our city is protected as much as possible within those guidelines.
And when they come to remediate, I did a Brownsville grant for St. Martinville, the JB Tally property that St. Martinville now owns. And at the time, my father and I wrote the Brownsville grant and administered it. And so they take out a lot more, I mean, the amount of salt they have to get around one of these elements, the amount of time they take to get it out, not to disperse it, and the way they go out so far to make sure they've kind of cleared it all, it's more extensive than you would think.
Okay.
But they have that down to a science.
Gotcha.
And they, you know, I don't know what the science is, you know, maybe they have some way to leave it, but stabilize it. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. But at least you want to be at the table in those negotiations when they're trying to determine how your city's going to be protected.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you personally for coming in and explaining.
Yes, sir.
It's important for the people on camera to hear what's going on.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
And I have no piece of this, but I'll say, they're not going to do anything till you make them.
True.
Right?
True.
Because the phone calls in the beginning.
Yeah, I tried. I couldn't get, I mean, I got on it the next day, and I didn't get too high up the ladder. I got to the state rep of one of these companies, and that's about as high as I got.
They'll get their attention.
That's right.
Yeah.
Cool. Then if there's nothing else, I'd ask you please vote your machines. Thank you. Thank you, both.
You're welcome.
Freddie, you still have that contract?
Yes, yes.
Jeff, you got it? Or you need me to send it?
Yes.
Have an extra copy here.
I have.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 5B.
Resolution number 24-34, a resolution declaring April as fair housing month in the city of New Iberia.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Martin Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yeah, Dede Johnson, was that she'd have made that motion? She loves fair housing.
She wouldn't beat us to it.
Yes.
She's doing a great job.
Yes, she would have.
She's doing a great job of representing us in Spain right now. That's the only reason she's not at the meeting, so. But she probably has a comment. Yes, sir. She's probably watching us some kind of way. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote your machines. Great. Thank you.
Don't answer the phone.
Yeah, she's texting me. No. 5C.
Resolution number 24-35, a resolution approving change order number three for the fiscal year 2021 LCDPG sewer system improvements project and authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
This is a $90,000 change order that we did not expect. Let me get a motion a second, and then I will call up Craig.
Motion.
Motion. Councilwoman Brooke Markcott and Councilwoman Leadbetter, thank you. Craig, you want to come up? These are lead better. Sharcodin.
Evening, council and mayor.
Want to tell us about what we couldn't see?
I mean. Not really. There was some unforeseen repairs while they were doing the Hopkins Street work. These additional sewer rehabilitation repairs were needed to be addressed prior to the DOTD road project that they have planned. Some of the additional work included additional smoke testing, main line point repairs, rehabilitation of eight-inch sewer, cast-in-place concrete piping, which is a liner to kind of re, you know, make the pipe better than it was. But, yeah, it was an unforeseen amount, but needed to be done.
Yep. And as you know, with all of our engineering contracts, it's all based on those unit costs. So the contractor puts his unit cost in. When you find some, same thing we have with the street program, that's just how those contracts work. So as they find additional damage, the cash register's ringing. It's all coin operated. Yes, sir.
They, I know they charge for that smoke test so much a foot, right? On Craig? Yeah. So it seems that's a lot of fee, we smoke test.
It is a lot of fee, sir.
A little project that is.
It is, but they put those unit costs in, and we approve the contract, we approve the bids, and if you look at all of them, they know what they're doing. Those unit costs, you know, they have overhead, they have, I mean.
Yeah.
But they load up their unit cost, and when you have to hit those, they, it's not, it's expensive.
The original contract linear footage for smoke testing was 25,000, but they ended up doing an additional 38,000. Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, no, they did more than the original.
And as they got to certain, you know, spots, they realized that, you know, there's more repairs to be done.
So.
There's no point paving the road and not fixing it. Yeah, so every, everything they found with the smoke tests, because that's to find the problem.
Yes.
So everything they found with that additional smoke test, we're fixing.
Yes. It's been fixed.
Or it's going to be fixed.
No, it is fixed. Or it's in the process. It might be in the process. Yes, sir. And it has to be fixed. I mean, we're paid, we're, you know, that project's huge, and y'all all know that.
Yeah, right.
They're coming on Hopkins Street, they're ripping up the road, they're ripping up the sidewalks, they're putting big box culverts in. I know I'm sharp, but I got to walk in them.
Yeah.
Okay, they'd go all the way to Bayou Tesh, which is going to help drain our community, and then they got to put all that back together. So things are being moved out the way, things are being repaired, and that's been going on for a while. And the real blood, sweat, and tears are coming because I want the new road, and I want the improved drainage, and I'm glad all the sewer's getting fixed, but the inconvenience for everyone on Hopkins Street, all of our businesses and people who live there, is coming. I can't, I can't get us out of that. I have requested a meeting that we meet and talk to everybody who's going to be affected by this, but DOT hasn't got back to me when that meeting will occur. But I really want one that we can have a town hall and get everybody who's going to be impacted so that they at least know it's coming. It's a good product in the end, but, you know, we're going to bleed to get there. But the point of all of this is this stuff has to happen before we put the road in because we don't want to put a new road in and new drainage and then tear it up. We've been waiting for a road long enough.
No reason I ask.
Yeah.
In the past, when I was here, we did many smoke tests, found problems, and we never fixed them. And we had to go back and do some more, and it's like, okay.
I do remember that.
Saw the amount, the smoke test, I didn't make sure we had to.
Yeah, we're not doing that, sir. We are fixing our problems.
Thank you.
How can I be a contractor and not fix the problems? I mean.
Would you say that probably was a smoke test before that area? Oh.
Oh, oh, repeatedly.
Repeatedly, no.
Repeatedly.
And some portions of this project fell on holidays as well, like in.
I saw that.
Yeah. We had a couple extra contract days just to avoid, you know.
And look, the same drought that cracked our new streets?
Yeah.
Didn't help this either.
No.
You know, as things shrink and things move, I'm not saying that some of them weren't there when you were there before.
Yeah.
But some of it has occurred lately, and as the road deteriorates, you also get more and more movement that, you know, probably broke some of this.
No, that's good. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Please vote your machines. All right, that was a quick way to spend $90,000. Item 5D.
Resolution number 24-36, a resolution authorizing the mayor to dedicate Section 8 Housing Choice vouchers to the Housing Authority of New Iberia to be used as project-based Section 8 vouchers for the A.B. Simon LP Housing Development Project to be completed with Knight Development Company, LLC, and further negotiate other terms as he sees appropriate.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by, I think it was Councilman Martin Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott, and a close third by.
That's fine.
Henry Goslin.
Just keep moving.
That's it. I think we have a presentation. Y'all, come on up. And this is something that's been in the works for a very long time. We've been addressing these issues and looking for some solutions for quite a few years. As many of you who've been on the council two terms know, I think we might finally have some solutions.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. For those of you who may not know me, I'm Dr. Janice Mercier Wade, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of the City of New Iberia. We're here this evening to say first, thank you for hearing us out, and to let you know that A.B. Simon Community is the focus of our presentation this evening because it's our Phase One of three. We're excited because the A.B. Simon Community was named in honor of an African-American educator, leader, minister, and was initially constructed in 1951, which makes it approximately 73 years old. And I think. Is he okay?
He's chilling. He's chilling.
For 70 years, thousands of New Iberians proudly called A.B. Simon home until a series of storm damages, the buildings beyond repair in early 2000s. For the safety and the remaining eight residents of A.B. Simon, we relocated them to other housing developments for their safety. It is now deemed inhabitable. Without rehabilitation, the city of New Iberia will lose 56, I'm sorry, 52 workforce housing units, creating an even larger gap. As we know right now, 1.5 million apartments house 2.1 million low-income constituents across the country. And right now, according to an article I read in December 16, 2023, America's housing shortage is about 3.2 million units. So we, while we have a crisis in New Iberia, there's a crisis all over the world. And today, we come asking you for your assistance with the 42, 52 vouchers to help us do this redevelopment. We do have a development team, Knight Development. You guys can step up. Ryan and Christina will be giving you the rest of the PowerPoint presentation, and at that, after that, if there are any questions, I'll be having to assist.
If we could go to the next slide, please. So again, LHC, Louisiana Housing Corporation, has recently released a NOFA of funding. And in that release of funding is approximately $230 million worth of CDBG funds that we are trying to tap into. A.B. Simon is well-located to score and qualify for this funding. It is a competitive round. The application goes in April 10 of 2024. So for A.B. Simon and for the application purposes, we are requesting to do project-based vouchers. That would be 52 or to cover the 30% and 60% AMI units, which would be right around 42 vouchers. The vouchers would still be the city's. We'd be going into a HAP contract with basically the Housing Choice voucher program, and we'd be working closely with the director, Ms. Hallie Beatty, to institute that and get that involved. And the Housing Choice voucher program has the right to basically do up to 20% of its total ACC unit amount for project-based vouchers. And this would, I believe that number is over 50 that the housing, that the New Iberia Housing Choice voucher program would be eligible to do, to do this. There are a few different steps, but that is also later on in the presentation. If we could go to the next slide, please. This kind of discusses A.B. Simon as it currently is right now. There's 76 current units. What we are proposing to do is demolish the current units. Some of those units themselves currently are gutted. We've walked through a few of them where it's just the studs. It'd be difficult to say, very expensive. The NOFA itself establishes that the project has to be new construction. So that is definitely a caveat of the NOFA. And one item that we are trying to meet, so to do this, we'd have 52 units, three one-bedrooms, 10 two-bedrooms, 19 three-bedrooms, and 24 bedrooms. Our TDC, or Total Development Cost, would be about 17 million. For the CDBG funds, we are requesting close to $6 million in funds, 6.2, so. And like I said, that is a competitive round, so there's no guarantee that we'd receive those funds, but we believe A.B. Simon is primed to score well and receive and be awarded. If we could go to the next slide, please. This kind of discusses just the current site plans that we are going to be using for our application. I understand some, there are different pictures going around, kind of discussing potential samples of what it could look like. It's largely going to be row housing. We're going to have a community building on the site as well as a new office, and also a playground or a gazebo, something for the tenants to use and to cherish. There will be security cameras, there'll be new lighting to help with any safety concerns. And we're going to make it so that the tenants really feel like this is their home and something they can cherish. If we could go to the next slide. We kind of went already over this. Like we said, this will be 52 units of workforce housing, workforce housing. We're going to be doing average income, 30% AMI, 60% AMI, 80% AMI. So it'll cover all of New Iberia. If we could go to the next slide, please. Some of the benefits for the city and for the program, the Housing Choice voucher program, would be by putting project-based vouchers on these units, they would also be receiving more, well, not necessarily more, but they'd be receiving admin fees for potentially vouchers that aren't currently in use. And we've had conversations with the director, they've gone very well. What she's done is amazing, and we're just hoping with project-based vouchers at A.B. Simon, we can hopefully continue the, yes, continue to do better, continue the push for the Housing Choice voucher program as a whole. Next slide, please. And then in the future, there will be more phases. Acadian and Markham will come next. Those units will be rehabbed, but we can get into that at a later date. Right now, we're focusing on A.B. Simon. And then further down in the slides, we kind of just have different information detailing housing choice vouchers that you all can look at and just so everyone understands kind of the process and what we're asking for. But if there are any other questions or whatnot?
Questions, comments? In your packet, we wrote a letter, and once you approve that letter with, if you do approve that letter tonight, then it goes to them, and you give me the, as usual, the ability to further negotiate. I do think that when we came into office and had all those visits from HUD, a very nice lady, Ms. Donna Wick, who kept coming down here and trying to get us to sign paperwork to condemn everything and tear it down, and we wouldn't do it. And we, uh, had help from the community and from the board, and we resisted for a very long time looking for a solution. And I think that it has been long overdue, but I think we finally have a solution. Had we just rolled over, as many communities did, and signed the paperwork, we wouldn't have this opportunity. So I think it is a real opportunity. Um, you know, as everything goes, there's always negotiation, there's always hurdles, there's always challenges, and we've had many along the way to get to this point. But, uh, I do think this is a positive thing. Um, Haley and I worked hard to protect, protect our Section Eight program and make sure, you know, Haley has added eighty families since she's been here in the last two and a half years. Our program is growing, it's succeeding, and, and hats off to you for doing that. So we did want to spend a lot of time worrying about that program because it is succeeding and seeing how this would affect us. Um, so we think it's, uh, an opportunity. Um, there's always some give and take with everything, but, uh, I think overall, it, uh, it's a positive thing for us to do. Certainly a positive thing for our community, and that's why we're up here. Yes, sir.
Mayor, there's old saying that say, what's understood don't need to be explained. I think the most important thing was the forty-two vouchers. And I think that the city has did their part in allowing those vouchers to be, uh, accessible by Knight for Development. And, uh, I, I, I think that's it for me, cut and dry, that the city has done their part in, in partnering with this.
We, we will do our part. Yes, sir.
Right.
Yes. Maria's?
If I may add.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, one thing we have to remember, that the new developments that we're doing is going to be state-of-the-art. Um, energy efficiency, uh, new appliances, refrigerator stove, dishwashers, perhaps washer and dryers. It's going to all be equipped. Everything will be equipped to the point where, for example, if you live in a four-bedroom, you will have one thousand four hundred square feet of living space. Of course, the living room, dining room will be open concept. And then you'll have three bed, uh, four bedrooms with two bathrooms. And the colors that we're looking at, it's going to make you feel like your house, you know what I'm saying? Like home. We don't, we no longer want to see the yellow and the institutionalized coloring walls. We wanted to look when they walk in that they're home. The landscaping will be done very, very nicely and well-kept by our, our maintenance people. Our future, uh, for A.B. Simon is to keep it as efficient and operable for the people that we live and that we want to live there. We want them to be happy to come home. We will have security cameras, and they will interface, hopefully, with the City of New Iberia Police Department. So if we have a major incident, it'll be right on, on point.
They will, and as soon as our cameras are up, we have a system to bring on those cameras, and that will happen.
And, you know, so we're looking at that, and we also may even consider having housed an actual police family on that property as well. So we're looking at, you know, we're trying to be visionaries here. And we're looking at not only A.B. Simon, but all three of our developments. And we need to mention that at Markham Homes, we currently have thirty units. We will have forty units on that development because of the back land will be developed into five two-bedrooms and five three-bedrooms. It may sound insignificant, but it's very significant because it will help ten more families get housing. Uh, we're excited about this venture. We thank the city for its time. We thank the council for its time. And we appreciate any and every consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are any questions.
Questions, comments?
Yes, sir.
So I heard you mentioned April tenth deadline for the application. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, so we, we went in seven days, six days, whatever from applying, right? So if, you know, we approve it tonight and the mayor negotiates, we get all the hurdles. What is the foreseeable time thing of, you know, start to finish, twenty-five, twenty-six, into twenty-four? I'm just asking.
Well, we're hoping that the, um, once we get, no, when we get approval for the money to do this development, our goal is to break grounds hopefully in November of two thousand twenty-four.
So there will have to be demolition of the current sites, uh, hopefully in November twenty twenty-four. And then per the timeline of the NOFA, we're looking at April twenty-five to start constructing new buildings.
And hopefully eighteen months from there, there'll be livable units for everyone to move in. Yeah, so we're looking at about an eighteen-month period. But on, please understand that the other two phases may also overlap. Meaning, once we get that funding done, we're going to be looking for the funding for Acadian. We're not going to sleep. We have to keep going. So you may see us again. So thank you again for your time.
Mayor.
Going to ask a question too.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So y'all are completely flattening out the complex.
Yes, ma'am.
Everything that's there. Okay, got you.
Yes, because we're going to make sure we build the land out. We're going to make sure that, again, um, I know we had environmental studies done, soil studies done. So we're making sure that when we build, we're building on solid.
Okay. I'm just glad to see something good coming of this place. Um, I've been out there a few months ago, and I was like, man, it's in bad shape. So thank y'all.
Yes.
I'm glad we can help house the families in this community.
Let's all go.
Yes, sir.
You still had the floor. I didn't know.
No, no, I'm done.
Okay. Uh, um, I want to commend the board and your direction on, on this project. You guys, Bishop Souffre, Mr. Fred, and I see, I see the board members over there. Y'all, man, I just want to recognize y'all. Y'all, y'all stuck this thing through, and I'm glad Brooke brought up the demolishing part because I got some calls during the week, uh, they gonna be demolishing them? I said, yeah, but they gonna be putting something new.
And the reason for the, the cost effectiveness councilman laws, because the plumbing, the electrical. Everything needs to be completely brought up to standard. When we built in nineteen fifty-one, I wasn't born yet, y'all. But when they built in nineteen fifty-one, they did the standards of nineteen fifty-one. This is two thousand twenty-four and beyond.
The sun cables of the time.
Yeah, there you go. There you go.
And, uh, another great feature is.
Where's my lawyer?
Even the water heater will be energy efficient. So we're looking at making sure that they have, just like we have at home, energy, energy efficiency. Uh, so, yes, sir.
Yeah, plenty of my family was born there, and, uh, my family was one of the first families back then, nineteen fifty-one. I'll tell you the story about how they got there later on.
Okay.
One of the first families.
Well, I, I did ask the mayor on the side, but applications are going to go.
No, we go. We do that all the time.
Traffic, traffic.
No, no, my fault.
No, I don't see nothing wrong.
I just want to see, the application process is still going to go through Haley, and when they're completed, right?
Yes.
That's, that's what I.
We'll still manage our waiting list.
That's right. Okay, that's what I was asking. I mean, there's no, everybody goes through the waiting list, same protocol and.
Yep.
Okay, because there will be people, you know, wanting to, you know, interested in written, you know, getting involved. So I just, you know.
Correct. And we have a choice.
And once we apply, our application goes, goes in on April tenth. We should hear something by June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, if we were awarded. And we will be posted on that. So.
Good.
We're very confident and prayerful that this will go through. So thank you again.
Mayor, one more thing. Y'all got to do that ground, because I'm termed out at the end of this year. Y'all got to do that groundbreaking. This year's out. I need to be in that picture.
Sure. Whomever takes your place.
You can go, go anytime, dude. Go after you, yeah.
I can go after, yeah.
I'll go with you.
Well, I won't hold it. I won't let it.
Yeah, myself.
He's going to let you cut the ribbon.
Yeah, we're going to let you cut the ribbon. Thank you, guys, and wear a hard hat. So, thank you much.
Thank you. Anybody else? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. All right. Now we're moving on to five B.
Resolution number twenty-four dash thirty-seven, a resolution authorizing the use of remaining twenty twenty-one City of New Iberia road project funds to be used for preliminary engineering for the twenty twenty-four City of New Iberia Road Project.
This is the ninety thousand dollars that we have left from the twelve point five million. While it won't go that far, it will start our engineers off to begin work. And then we'll talk about the bond money because it's coming too. But that's what this ninety thousand would be utilized for, to hire our engineers and officially begin. They've already started, but officially begin the planning for the sixteen million next phase of our roadwork. So do I have a motion?
Motion.
Move.
Motion by Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsal. Second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion? No discussion? Then please vote your machines. Thank you, sir. Get to work. All right. Item six A.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash ten, an ordinance levying millages on the twenty twenty-four tax roll on properties subject to taxation by the City of New Iberia and setting for public hearing on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
And remember, the, all of our rates will remain the same. We're not raising our tax rate if you vote for this. But I like to put that out there because people panic sometimes. So with that, do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Dan Dahl and second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, sir.
Mayor, how often do we have to do this? Every year?
Yes, sir. Every year.
And they cut up for renew every four years? How often they come?
Reassess, huh?
They reassess. How often? They different, they different ones.
Yeah, it's not.
I don't know.
It's not every, because some millages go for twenty years.
Could we have that?
You mean like a breakdown?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Sure. I don't know if it'll be for the next meeting, but we can try.
Okay, just see.
How many years left we got on each one?
Yeah. If you don't want.
We can pull it up.
Reassessments on the schedule.
Yeah, but remember that millages, we adopt a millage, it'll go for twenty years.
That's right.
You know.
So you want the tax renewals.
But you want the renewals. You want to know when they're going to renew. Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Not a problem. Um, I think she's pulling it up now. Any other discussion?
Get it to all of us, lady. For Danny, I think.
Okay, okay. Any, any other discussion? Nope. Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. And we'll have that information in your packet for next time. Six B.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash eleven, an ordinance authorizing the City of New Iberia, State of Louisiana, to proceed with a not-to-exceed sixteen million dollar financing through the Louisiana Local Government Environmental Facilities and Community Development Authority and providing for other matters with respect thereto and setting for public hearing on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
This is exciting. This is the first step for our sixteen million for our next phase of our road program. So do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Martin Lewis and a second by Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsal. Is there any discussion on this item?
Let's roll.
Uh, that's what I say.
Are we going to have, are we going to go through the same process as the first one? Engineers going to go out and check the worst roads and?
Exactly the same process because it works. So basically, they went by each district. They picked the worst roads. We've already repaired some, but we still got plenty. And if you notice, they seem to be crumbling at a faster rate. And I think a lot of that is from the drought.
You're right.
But they go through, they assess each district, they meet with each councilperson, y'all talk about them. You know, trying not to change too many because we really are picking the worst ones.
Right.
Which is what we did last time. And then they'll do their engineering work. A, a rough schedule. We should have our money in a couple of months from now. They need to do their engineering and then advertise the plans. So you're probably looking at late this year, November, December, we'd probably be, I'd forbid, something like that. So I don't look for this new sixteen million dollars worth of road construction to really start till next year. But if we don't get going, it'd be longer than that, and, and we want to do this as fast as we can. In the meantime, and I'm going to overload it, but I'm going to tell you, we bought this little hot patch machine for fifty thousand dollars, and it takes three men to run it, and all it does is fix potholes, and the list is growing by the minute. Uh, we tried to prioritize the list and went and found the worst ones, but they popping up all over. Our crews will never finish that. They will be doing these pothole repairs for the rest of the time they work for the city. But it's a better process. We had that junk you would shovel, and it would last for a day or two. And the car would actually, the same day would run it out the hole. We outlawed that. At least when we finish a pothole, it is patched. Now, we know we're patching some potholes on roads that we're going to fix. But again, I'm trying to be fair and do the whole town, and I'm finding the worst potholes. Now, every once in a while, my list gets beat. We found one today that was probably worse than many of the ones that were on the list. We will just do our best and continue to run around repairing potholes. It's why we spent twelve million on our roads, and it's why we're about to spend sixteen million more because so many years had gone by with no road program. We know we got issues. We all drive the same streets. So when we all call complaining about a new pothole, we know everybody else has seen it too. But we are making a list, and we're doing our best to fix those as we wait to redo our streets. But it's a never-ending cycle.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just, I'm glad you said that. Um, the repairs y'all doing on the streets, public need to understand, that's not the road program.
No, it's, no, it's not. Look, people voted no to our millages the first time because they saw that junk that they were putting in the road, and they said, well, that must be the city's road, but that was temporary. What we're doing now is temporary, but it's a better patch.
And what's going on in some streets right now, they throwing it, the stuff with the shovel, and it's getting all over your car. That's DOTD.
That is not us because we don't do that anymore.
Separate that because.
Totally separate.
We got a few calls.
And we've had a couple of utility companies come and break holes, and they're supposed to patch them in a timely manner. And we just made them pay for two people's cars because they didn't fix them in a timely manner.
Thank you.
Uh, but again, that wasn't us.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I saw a guy in the middle of Hopkin Street patching a hole, and he was using a sledgehammer. And I mean, I'm like, this, I don't know what he was doing. He might have been fixing a manhole. No, but he was.
Was it one of our people?
No, no, it was like a contractor. It was a contractor.
Okay, no, I mean, uh, because what do we?
Going to smoke test.
I don't know what he was doing. I don't know what he was doing.
I'm like, man, this is going to last.
Yeah, but they were packing in the patch.
Right.
Yeah, because with this hot patch machine, you do pack it in, and there's a process that, you know, but I don't know who that was.
I know you said you, we hired somebody or somebody that came down.
We have a contractor.
That came down and showed us how to.
Well, I did two things, okay? One, I bought a hot patch machine, so we finally had a decent piece of equipment like other cities have had. Number two, I did find an asphalt, it might be them, I did find an asphalt contractor who is patching for Laco and some of the other utility companies and doing a good job. And he's new because we got all over them because what they were doing wasn't like it could have been, okay? So we actually got a contract with that guy. He's expensive. But there are times that we hire him to do our sewer, because we have to break our own roads for sewer. Um, we have issues. So we have a contractor now that will come. Again, nothing's free and nothing's fast. He only comes when there's about twenty holes. Because asphalt is a very different animal. You, you can't come and patch one hole. So when we save up a bunch of them, then I hire him, and he does them. And they come out really good. Um, you know, can't hire them for everything, though. We have to do some of that in-house, so we, we can't keep up.
But that work wouldn't have been done on our, on, on the state highway anyway.
Right.
Wouldn't have been.
Right. Well, yeah, he, he does patch.
He's done some stuff for us. Okay.
That could have been a Laco, and then they hire him too. And it might have been them because they really pack it.
Crazy guy with a hammer.
Yeah, yeah, I need to hire that guy with the hammer. Anybody else?
So since we're talking about roads, I always have to mention Darby Lane because the people are constantly calling. And they're like, it's never going to get done.
It's on the list, and we're moving as fast as we can move.
I don't know why they don't believe that.
I don't know. Well, they didn't believe before we did the twelve million dollars worth of work we were really going to do in these streets. So maybe there's some people who are nonbelievers again.
Right.
But sixteen million's a lot of money, and it's coming. But thank you.
I hope so sooner than later.
I do too. Anybody else?
On Bank, why are there little pebbles now on Bank Street? What happened?
Because we can only patch with our hot patch machine, and we patch them, okay? Some of that road is breaking up so bad, nothing. Remember, a patch is not a permanent solution. Some of the patches are holding, and some of the road is so deteriorated, it, it's breaking down to nothing.
Gotcha.
I don't have a way to patch that.
Okay.
I just don't. And that's going to continue in that one block until we do the road program.
Right.
It's why, it's why a city should never wait the fourteen to fifteen years that we had between road programs. I mean, we came in and we're playing catch-up. But that, that long gap is what killed you.
Yeah, sewer problem.
Yeah, we had other issues. Yeah, and I'm not, you know, and, and you, I'm not blaming, look, there's twenty-six other people on that wall besides me, okay? I'm not blaming any one of the past mayors. They had other problems. The sewer issue was a much bigger issue with the federal government down there back on a consent decree. They weren't worried about the roads. They were worried about not going to jail.
I wasn't going to jail.
Yeah, so, you know, different times call for different urgencies, I guess you could say. Anybody else? Then please vote your machines, and this is the start, first step of our road program. Thank you. All right. Six C.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twelve, an ordinance establishing a procedure for the sale or transfer fur of ownerships of a retired police dog and repealing all ordinances or, or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and setting for public hearing on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on this dog?
Do we have someone retiring?
We do. His name is Ebar, and he's old. And so he will retire, and the officer that has been his handler, I think, will take him.
Okay, good.
Cool.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, believe it or not, there's a statute on dog retirement. And it says we have to adopt a procedure. So this adopts the procedure. And basically, we're saying if the handler will take the dog, then we don't sell the dog. We don't want to sell the dog to the public.
No.
And we don't want the dog to go to somebody who can't handle a dog like that. Because these dogs have special skills and need special control. So the procedure that we have is if the handler will take the dog, we make an agreement with the handler to take the dog. So this is the procedure we adopt under this statute, and then we're going to have particular dogs that are going to come up. And we don't have one of those before you yet, but that one dog is coming up, and the handler is going to take that dog. But this is, this is the process we're going to follow.
Okay.
To have the, have the handler assume responsibility for the dog and, uh, you know, cost of maintenance and all that kind of stuff. Can't sell the dog, all that, so.
Good deal.
Liability is removed from us, correct?
Yes.
Not our dog anymore.
Not our dog. Somebody else? Then please vote your machines. Thank you. Thank you. Six D.
Special ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash two thousand twenty-four dash eighteen, an ordinance amending the budget to facilitate the costs related to change order number three for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one LCDBG sewer system improvements project and setting for public hearing on April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
This pays that ninety thousand dollar change order. Uh, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marcot, and a second by Councilman Martin Lewis. Is there any discussion? Please vote your machines. Thank you. Seven A.
A discussion related to the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled One Block at a Time, Two Blighted Property.
We kind of talked about it earlier. This is where we take the steps to mimic the half-million-dollar program that, for demos, and you made the amendments earlier. We probably didn't have to have it, and we added the residential to the business development grant. So that was kind of what we were doing. But I wanted to put it on to take this time to ask each one of you, like last time, and the general public, that we're going to be back in the demo, the friendly demo game. So if you have property that you want to have demoed at no cost to you, it has some criteria. You have to be the owner, it has to meet our demo standards, okay? So there's some rules to it. But we just succeeded in locking up a half-million-dollar grant and having enough property to do all of that, have an overflow list, and if you ride around our community, there's still a need. So if you feel like you were left out of the first program, or just didn't make the cut, or didn't hear about it until now, or you're just hearing about it now, contact your councilperson, give them the address, and we will make the list. But I wanted to have a little public appeal, and, you know, this council did a great job last time. Every one of you found properties, every one of you contacted people, and I thank you for that. But this is an opportunity to further clean up our community. So I thought that I would just add it on, just so that I could get my public service announcement in.
Fair question.
Yes, sir.
So can I request the list again, so I can see what's on the list and what's on the waiting, holding list, so that we can, so I can relook at some?
Yes, yeah, that way we'll know what's on. And some of the people in the original list won't make the cut. Some of them will not be able to clear their property or won't take the steps to, you know, to cure the problem. So then they'll drop off. We'll continue to move people up on that first list to make sure we spend all the money. But I know we have more want than money. So this new way of looking at it will give us a new list, and we can keep moving from there. So anyway, that was, I just wanted to add it in, and I don't know if any of you have anything else you'd like to discuss.
Mayor, it is residential and commercial.
Yeah, residential and commercial. That's why we added that, so that we could mimic the state program that seems to be very successful.
Thank you.
Anybody else? We good? Cool. And now we'll move on to councilmen's remarks. I will start with Councilwoman Brooke Marcot.
Okay. I don't know if maybe I probably should just add it to our next meeting agenda, but we need to have a serious conversation about Pelicans.
Okay.
They're not finishing my district again today. I got a text.
I got a text, and they're going to finish it in the morning, but let's have a discussion.
Okay, yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
We got to, we got to figure out what to do. I don't think they have enough manpower or enough equipment, something. We deal with great people in the office, you know, they, they are very receptive to our communications all the time. But as far as actually the people working out there, getting the stuff done, I don't think they have enough of those people. So we got to figure it out.
We do.
Because I get too many calls.
In other instances, they go out of their way, and they pick up things that they wouldn't have to pick up.
That is true.
They do a whole lot of that. They pick up trees that are too large, they pick up stuff. I ride by and say, no way, that ain't going to happen. You know, it's too big, it doesn't meet the contract. They pick it up. I call them to pick up things that, until we get our ordinance straight, and people have dumped out houses and done things that they shouldn't, they pick it up.
Yeah.
So in some instances, they're rock stars, and in other ones, they're not.
I agree.
Uh, it's just that simple. So I hope that we can find a solution.
Me too.
You know, I think they're a good company to deal with. Their price was good. They are trying, but I do think that it's worthy of a discussion, and we'll go from there. I mean, we have a contract, we have markers and penalties in the contract, and I mean, if that's the route we have to go, we have to go. I do see at times they improve greatly, and I'm thinking, boy, they got it now. And then something happens, and, you know, it starts again. But it's why you bid those out, and, you know.
Okay, so I should put it on the next agenda?
Yeah, you, yeah, we already got it. We got it.
Okay.
It's on the next agenda, man.
Perfect. Okay. And I hope that they're here, you know, so that we can.
Oh, look.
Oh, yeah, somebody's got to be here.
Yeah, we will, we put on the agenda, and we will, you know, make sure that we get somebody here to have a discussion.
Okay, good deal.
They're on the menu.
Yeah, they'll be on the menu. Yeah, there you go.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I'm going to piggyback for a part of my public, uh, councilman remark. I know, I think, I've been around garbage for a long time, watching my grandfather with BF Fire, Wasteman, with all them people. Garbage was always an issue, getting a company, keeping a company, saving money for a company. For years, I've been hearing my people talk about garbage, so I know it's always an issue. Gardens, we had gardens for a long time, and I believe gardens was a well-oil machine. A well-oil.
No debate, no debate on that.
And so now, coming from gardens to this.
I taught him well.
I just, coming from gardens to this, I said, we just have to kind of like be a little patient with them, because they are a new company. They, I believe they don't even know all the streets yet. You got some little allies that I didn't know existed, I don't see how they going to know they existed, and they missing them. So definitely it's time for, for a conversation, but I, I tell my constituents, it's growing pains of a new company, you know? And I got some stuff out there that, still out there. And Deidre will tell you, because I ride District Two and District Five because they're close together.
Yeah.
They got some stuff that they just miss, you know, so I'm with you on that. What I will say to the public, new company versus a well-oil machine, don't accept, don't expect excellence, but don't accept less than, you know, what we got before.
Yes, sir.
I think I'm going to leave that for my, oh, Smile Community Action Gala is Friday at seven o'clock, Community, K Community Center. Tickets are forty dollars. Come out and support Smile, it's a great organization. They do great things for our community, LaHeep rental assistance, credit repair, help people get in college, they do a lot. So Smile Community Action Gala, if you're able to attend or donate, you can talk to me after, or call me during.
Thank you.
The week.
Bruce Ari, Councilman Bruce Ari.
Every Friday for the last three weeks, Ms. Marcot, I've got my call on garbage. Just skip the whole street. You know, so it's hard to get them between Friday and Monday. I call up some numbers. I ask y'all what numbers to call. I call them, you can't get through. So we need some better communication when it come next meeting of how to get a hold of them. Hey, Mr. Mayor, they got some taxes coming up. We got hours through a little bit, sir. The sheriff's acting for some for his people and a little bit deserving. The parish has one, I think, outside the city limits for their roads. You know, outside the city limits. People look and see what taxes they have, judge them. Watch what's happening, because all of them are needed, and which one more is needed than the other one. So that's what I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to refrain from talking about taxes and garbage. Let's talk about something good, right? So, I mean, we always make the comment of, you know, getting engaged in our communities and what's going on, but just look at the public agenda for the month of April. Every weekend, we have some kind of community event, from the tricycle races to the Live Oaks Festival to, there's so many events, the Literary Festival and the Spanish Festival. So get out, get involved in your community, participate. New Iberia is a great place to live, and a lot of events that we can all bring our kids and family to and enjoy it.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I pass tonight.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think we all have an issue with the garbage. And I do get the calls, just like everyone else. But I think the key is, is, you know, I'm in business, and employment is very hard to get people. It's no excuse, but it is a problem.
Right.
And I think a number, instead of going through City Hall, maybe the representatives, whoever comes, someone we can talk to, to let them know, to respond back to the people that's calling us. It's not life or death, but it is a contract. And I think they trying their best. And I really believe it's about not having enough people to do the job. And they want to do a good job. I don't think they're doing it because they don't want to do it, but I think the key thing is get to someone to talk to.
Right.
And say, hey, they missed this street, who can we talk to to get someone over here? And I, I think that would help out. We haven't, look, I have property somewhere else, and we have an issue with it too, somewhere else, not even in Iber Parish. So it's a problem throughout. But let me tell you something good about, we're talking about good and bad, we had some people at my house from Chicago the other day, and we took them around town, and then they, they went on their own around town, and they came back and said, these are the nicest people in this community, really. When you sit down, they're asking where you're from, or talk to you. And where we from, Chicago, I'm not sure where they from exactly, you sit down, you eat your meal, and you leave. He said, so it is a good thing about this community and how everyone was so nice to them, they were here for about a week. So it is a good thing, and we do have people that, even though we have garbage problems and other problems, we have good people here. And it's good to hear. I mean, you know, and these people is like, just, I would come back here. For them to say that, that is a big deal. You know, because I went to other states, and I wouldn't go back there. So that is a good thing about living in New Iberia. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, yep, no, our people are our strength. I think we all know that, and that's why we do these jobs. If you don't want to fool people, don't sit up here. But I do think that that is one of our real strengths. I don't have anything tonight. April sixteenth is our next meeting, and this was a good one. Thank all of y'all. And with that, need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Great.